Good evening. I'm James Bell and tonight I'll be serving as the Chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 5th, 2024. The first matter of business is citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to appear before a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding any matter posted on the agenda was to sign up no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If anyone signed up to speak, they will have three minutes. Staff will time each citizen and provide a warning when they have 30 seconds left. Seeing we have none, we'll move over to the next matter of business, which is the approval of the minutes for the following meetings: the July 25th Special Joint City Council Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, August 1st Planning and Zoning Commission Executive Session, and August 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Let's do it, approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Next up are the zone cases. Please note that Agenda Item 3.3, Zone Case 3050-H, has been withdrawn by the applicant and will not be heard tonight. The first zone case that we will sit here is Item 3.1, Zone Case 1531-B.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Padilla. This is Zone Case 1531-B. The applicant is Judith Struggs. Purpose is a request for the Historic Preservation Overlay District to designate the property with a local historic designation. We've sent out 45 notifications. We received five in favor this morning that you should have and zero in opposition. This property is located south of 20th Street and west of Cedar Avenue. Here is an aerial view of the property. To the north is a funeral home, to the east, south, and west are residential homes. The current zoning is low-density, single-family. Here are some photos of the property. 2002 Cedar Avenue was built in 1949 and was the home of E.C. Struggs. This is a side view. Side back view. The garage. The rear view. And the rear view of the garage. Edward Cecil Prof Struggs, an educator who led the development of the African-American schools in Lubbock, Texas for 35 years, was born on October 3rd, 1900, in Wallace, Texas, in Austin County. He was the son of E.W. and Mattie Campbell Struggs. After entering elementary school in Wallace, he continued at Marlin, Texas. Struggs then completed high school classes and a Bachelor of Arts degree at Paul Quinn College in Waco. Later, he added a Bachelor of Science degree from Prairie View State Normal and Industrial College, now Prairie View A&amp;M University, and a Master of Arts diploma at the University of Michigan. Summer graduate work followed at the University of Michigan, University of Southern California, and Texas Tech University. Struggs began his career in 1925 as a teacher and principal at Minerva, Texas, where he taught for five years. During that time, he met his wife Lillian, a teacher at Cameron, Texas, and they married on December 26, 1926. They had a daughter named Judith. In 1930, the Struggs family moved to Lubbock, where he served as a teacher and principal of Dunbar, the school with secondary-level classes for African-American students. He expanded Dunbar to a full high school level by 1932 and won support for a new building by 1937. Accreditation by the Southern Association of Secondary Schools followed. Struggs continued as a principal until 1965. That same year, the Lubbock Independent School District opened E.C. Struggs Junior High School, named in his honor. His many former students celebrated the commemoration of Struggs' legacy. Struggs served as president of the West Texas District Teacher Association and is a life member of the National Education Association. His civic service included the Board of Directors for Carver Heights Nursery, Community Chest, the Boy Scouts, and the local draft board during World War II. He also participated in the men's civic and social clubs, the Eastside Cemetery Committee, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, and a Masonic Lodge. He and his wife were members of the Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church, where he became Secretary-Treasurer of the Board of Trustees. Struggs acted as superintendent of the Sunday School for 33 years. Edward Cecil Prof Struggs died in Lubbock on August 18, 1979, and he was buried in the City of Lubbock Cemetery. The applicant is requesting the Historic Preservation Overlay District to designate the property with a local historic designation. There are 13 different criteria which make a property eligible for a local historic designation. The applicable criterion in this case would be number 11. It's the identification with a person or persons who significantly contributed to the culture and development of the city, state, or the United States. The intent purposes of the Historic Preservation Overlay are history, heritage, property values, city pride, tourism, economy, utilization of districts, education. Criteria for historic landmark designation, number 11. And staff recommends approval of this request. I can take any questions.
And this already went for a historical designation, am I correct?
Yes, we already did.
So we're looking at just zoning it to be the overlay to match that, correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing now. Is the applicant or the representative here wish to speak? Okay. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Okay. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve Zone Case 1531-B.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
What have they done to this property to make you?
What has been done to this property that they feel that it needs to be preserved?
There have not been any renovations done to the property that I am aware of. My understanding is Ms. Struggs wants the historic designation so that she will be eligible for some tax exemptions after she receives the local historic designation. If it's approved, she's going to seek a state and federal historic designation as well to see what type of tax credits she can get there as well and then potentially make some renovations to the property.
Are they going to be utilizing this property in any way, shape, or form to where it would benefit the neighborhood in any way? Or is it just going to be a property that will be sitting there? Has she stated that at all?
She currently resides at this property and will continue to use it as her primary residence.
So it would just be her home?
It'll be her home.
So she's not going to make it to where we can go into it as a historical museum or anything of that nature? She's not going to provide any services like continued education for students in the neighborhood or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
So, okay.
I was just going to say the local historic designation will restrict any changes she makes to the exterior of the property. If she wants to vary from anything as it currently sits, she'll have to seek approval from the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission.
So at what point do you get that bronze sign that you mount in front of your house?
Yeah. If City Council approves the local historic designation, then we will do that.
Well, that's... I think it'd be honored. I think it's an honor to honor this man. He's done a lot for the community and the... and the education system, so I'm for it.
I've seen this property and I'm a little concerned.
It's a little rough, yeah.
No, the activity that goes on at this property, I'm a little concerned.
Well, and that's one of the things that I looked at is seeing the pictures of it. It looked a little in need.
And it sounds to me that it's just a personal profit, personal thing that she'll be getting out of that, which is a mostly tax credit. What benefit is it going to be to the community or anything? He also has a school named after him already. I mean, this property is not going to serve a true purpose in the neighborhood. She's going to be getting a tax credit.
Is it fair to say that it's going to be more difficult to renovate this property given this designation?
It will be more difficult to renovate the exterior, yes.
So has the historical designation has not been approved by the city?
No. The Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval of the historic designation. Now their recommendation comes to this commission. Your recommendation for approval or denial will be taken to City Council, who will have the final decision.
So it has to meet both of these to be able to get the designation? And have to have the zone changed and the recommendation for the Historical Preservation District?
Yes. It's one in the same, but you're correct. It has to go through this process because it is an overlay district.
Okay, thank you. You know, it's one of those ones that, you know, I think he has done a lot for here. Again, one of the ones things is with the applicant's not here, that's one of the crosses on me for any type of case.
My opinion is we just can't hold one this different than we would expect a developer to be here and to meet with us.
I will just do the Struggs.
Seventy-seven, I believe.
She did advise us when she initially applied for this historic preservation. She might not be able to attend the meetings due to her health, so I don't know if she was able to attend tonight or not.
Do we have any other discussions?
So if this is, if we deny this, it's going to prevent her from getting the historical?
No, your recommendation will still be forward to City Council.
Any other questions, comments? Y'all want to call the question? Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
We do have a motion and a second. Okay, Item 3.1, all in favor of Zone Case 1531-B, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Can we have a show of hands? All in favor, say aye. Okay, all opposed, say nay. Fails two to five. Next item of business is Zone Case 2161-M.
Good evening. My name is Cassie. This is Zone Case 2161-M. The applicant is HFA LLC for Lubbock Commercial Building. Their request is for a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial District NC to Auto-Urban Commercial District AC. The property is in District 4, is located south of 82nd Street and east of Elgin Avenue. We sent out 87 notifications and have received two in opposition. The two opposing letters were concerned with the potential decrease in property values for homeowners and the issue with any drive-through or access to the alley becoming a persistent problem for homeowners. Here is a Mallet Notification Map demonstrating... here is the aerial view of the subject property. The current zoning properties to the north, east, and west are zoned for a mix of Neighborhood Commercial and Office District land uses. The eastern property is developed with a fast-food restaurant, while the properties to the west and north feature various shop office spaces. To the south is developed with single-family homes. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. And here are photos provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for commercial uses. The proposed zone change to AC would be in conformance with the commercial designation. This request would be appropriate adjacent to lower-intensity commercial land uses and fronting onto an arterial street. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and the properties are located along an arterial. And the requested zoning district is appropriate adjacent to the nearby commercial land uses. The subject property is located in an area with a mixture of office and commercial land uses. To the east, there is a fast-food restaurant, while the properties to the west and north are occupied by various office spaces. To the south, the area is consistent... area consists of single-family residential homes. The proposed zone change is along 82nd Street, which is considered an arterial street. Arterial streets are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local traffic and regional traffic. Staff recommends approval of this request, and we can take any questions at this time.
Cassie, I do have one question for you. One of the letters stated about ingress and egress from the alley. Is there any from this, or is it blocked off from the alley?
This property has not been platted. This property hasn't been platted yet.
They won't be allowed to access the property from the alley. They'll have a required buffer yard.
Okay, that's what I'm... thank you, and I just wanted to clarify that fact. Right, so everything will be coming from 82nd Street. Okay, thank you.
Can you go back to the elevation if you get a chance here? So it'd be the... there's the front. So elevation three is facing north, facing 82nd? Is that right?
Yes.
So people... this property has its own driveway? And do cars come in and go around the building and then come out the front? Or vice versa? There. Looks like they go around and then come out the front. Is that setback kind of in line with... looks like it's closer than canes. Is that not right, or is that right?
Yes.
Should be 45 or 40?
Wrong, 82nd. It looks like they're getting a little more than 50. Yeah, I'm seeing seven foot eight, then another 20, then another 25, if I'm reading that correctly.
And that's okay under new UDC?
Yes, the minimum... go ahead.
Yes, that is correct.
And the other thing to make note on that, to Jordan's point, is it's over 115 feet to... or it's 115 feet from the back of the property line to the parking spaces. So that building's pulled way up to the front of 82nd.
I mean, if it meets the...
That's a lot.
Meets the guidelines, there's nothing really...
Dirt in the back.
It's been an empty lot a long, long time, obviously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cassie. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak?
I think you did a great job presenting our case. I don't necessarily have anything to say, but do y'all have any additional questions on our layout or things you'd like to see?
And if you'll state your name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
If you'll state your name and address.
Hayden Vokey. Address is... I forget the office address. 1705 South Walton Boulevard, Bentonville, Arkansas.
Jordan, did you have any questions for the applicant? You were asking on some of those?
No, they answered.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If not, we'll close the public hearing for matter of discussion. Do we have a motion?
For purpose of the discussion, move to approve Zone Case 2161-M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
You know, at first glance, oil changes, you kind of raise your radar up, but the more you think about them, after 6 o'clock, there's nothing going on. I mean, they're closed. As opposed to raising canes, it's up until 10 and putting off smell. I mean, this is very well... this is good smell. I mean, this is a very low-impact deal if you really think about it.
I agree with that. Because basically, everything else you're going to go, going down, you've got canes, then you've got Deons, then you've got the grocery store, and then you've got the movie theaters and all the other restaurants and...
Or more high-traffic than an oil change.
Right.
And for the two letters in opposition, we addressed the drive-through. Obviously, it's not on the back of the property to the alley.
And it's not car sales.
There you go. So I feel comfortable about it.
I do, too. Anybody else have any other discussion? Okay, y'all ready to take the vote? Okay. All in favor of Zone Case 2161-M, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 3.3 has been withdrawn, so we'll move to the last item, Item 3.4, Zone Case 3267-A.
This is Zone Case 3267-A. The applicant is Spindelbach Properties LLC. Their request is for a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial District to Heavy Commercial District. The subject properties are located between 116th Street and 118th Street Here is a Mallet Notification Map. We did receive three letters in favor, and here is an aerial view of the subject property. The current zoning is Neighborhood Commercial. The properties to the north and south are zoned with a combination of Heavy Commercial District and Neighborhood Commercial District and a low-density, single-family district. To the east, there is a mini-self-storage-zoned Heavy Commercial, and to the west is zoned Single Family District, built with a church. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. Here is a photo of the subject properties and the surrounding area. Here is a photo provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this property for commercial land uses. The proposed zone change to HC would be in conformance with the future land use plan. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and it will be appropriate at the proposed location. The subject properties are surrounded by commercially-zoned districts. The zoning change to Heavy Commercial District will not change the surrounding area or the character of the existing development. The location is between 116th Street and 118th Street, which are designated as local streets typically... Local streets typically provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas such as neighborhoods, subdivisions, or local business districts. Staff recommends approval, and we can take any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
On that zoning, Google Maps aerial, is that... it showed residential next to that at... to the west of that property?
To the east.
To the west. Yeah, the Google, the actual...
Could you go back one slide, Cassie?
One more. Is that to the west there? Is that a residence?
No, that's a church.
That's a church. Didn't we talk about this one?
Yes, we postponed this case. The applicant is here tonight.
Just curious if anyone's talked to that resident... or that residential zoning?
Thank you, Cassie. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the representative or his/her representative here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Taylor Carmona, 6309 Indiana Avenue, Suite B, Lubbock, Texas. So I can answer your question on that. I have not talked to her. I think it's some woman who owns this church. It looks abandoned to me. It's an old metal building. I've never seen anybody there. It's all commercial right there. Any... I can answer any questions if y'all need.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Purpose of discussion, move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second? I think this whole area is one that's kind of, I think, started out a lot as residential, and it's gradually been changing over. And I understand, Jordan, what he's saying. I know that I have a storage unit next to it, and I've never seen anything at that church either whatsoever. But that's not to say it doesn't happen, but I think...
This is common in this area. We've seen a lot of these.
A lot of it, and I think that whole area, we've already started the 114th. It's got a lot of the commercials, and then back is that, too. So I think it fits right in with it. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. That closes the public meetings. Now we'll move to other business items. Agenda Item 4.1, Ms. Sager will present that to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a work session to consider five proposed amendments to the Unified Development Code. If you'll recall, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council held a joint hearing on July 25th. The Planning and Zoning Commission took action on those amendments August 1st, and the City Council took their first action August 13th. On August 13th, there were five amendments that the council postponed to their September 10th meeting with the stipulation that they come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission for an additional review. The First Amendment was Item Number 4 in relation to canopy signs in the public and non-residential districts. The staff recommended amendment was to change the maximum of one sign per canopy to no maximum. Item Number 5, also related to canopy signs in the base public and non-residential districts, was to allow an electronic message display, which is currently prohibited. Now, Councilman Collins has proposed some changes to these amendments that we would like to present to you tonight. In relation to these two items for canopy signs, we would keep the current definition and provisions for canopy sign and the definition of an awning or canopy as it is written in the Unified Development Code today. That is on your screen. And then we would remove Amendments Number 4 and 5 and replace them, adding a new definition for a freestanding canopy sign, a new definition for freestanding canopy, and then add that as a sign type. So you have a freestanding canopy limited to two signs per canopy, and they allow an electronic message display. There was some concern over just having a single definition of a canopy. That could be freestanding. That could be a canopy on a wall of a building. And then you could have an electronic message display on a wall canopy sign. Thus, the proposal for the freestanding canopy. Item Number 19 was related to signs in residential districts for a non-residential use. We do have non-residential uses, like churches, medical offices, that are allowed in some of our residential districts, like high-density residential. And we want to allow them to be able to follow the commercial sign code. This would be adding Letter B here, allowing that. We do not have any... This would be adding letter B here, allowing that. We do not have any recommended changes to this amendment. Item thirty-three is related to monument signs. This is for properties that have at least four hundred feet of frontage. If they choose so, they can split their allowed sign area into two separate signs that are a minimum of two hundred feet apart. This amendment clarifies that you are allowed two monument or pole signs. We don't have any recommended changes to this amendment. Item forty-seven was related to murals in the base public and non-residential districts, as well as the mixed-use districts. Currently, murals are limited to fifty percent of the facade area, ten percent of the facade per tenant, seventy-five percent of the facade or tenant space in the MU districts, and then seven hundred and fifty square feet, thirty-five foot width in the non-residential districts. Staff recommended amendment was to change the sign area maximum and sign width maximum to no maximum in the mixed-use and the non-residential districts, and then clean up removing the MU four and MU six since those districts no longer exist. The proposal from Councilman Collins is that mural, murals in the MU districts can go to one hundred percent or no maximum of a wall facade only when located on a side or rear-facing wall, so not the front, and that we not change any of the current regulations for the non-residential districts. So I went through that pretty quick. What questions do you have for me?
There's nothing for us to do on this thing, correct?
I think you actually can take action if you so choose. So y'all can, y'all can make your recommendations, y'all can sit there and come back with something else. At the time, and I think, I believe some of the, some of the members might have been at the council meeting, but these were the ones that Councilmember Collins wanted taken off and then, so that the rest of the amendments to the UDC could move forward. That's what the council did, and so we don't have to go back through all the notice process and everything else that was just specifically sent right back to Planning and Zoning for y'all to look at what his, and he didn't have any specific recommendations at that time. They've, since then, the council member has met with staff, and that's, that's what they were able to come up with as far as narrowing down what his recommendations are. So this is for y'all to look at, to sit there, and he wanted to know, staff does too, you know, based, since it's different from what y'all originally recommended, whether or not you think his suggested changes are worthwhile, whether or not you would rather go with the original, whether or not you would like to make no comment. I mean, y'all can pretty much do whatever you want to at this point in time as the commission.
But these are the recommendations of Councilman Collins?
Yeah, and so it'll, you know, it'll come back as a form of his recommendation to the council, but they'll want to know what the Planning and Zoning Commission...
Okay.
So I have a question on the canopy.
Mm-hmm.
That was the gas stations, correct?
Yes.
And so they were wanting to be able to put the canopies on all four sides of their pumps?
Yes, so the freestanding canopy over the pumps, we were limited to one sign and they needed two, and they weren't allowed the electronic message display, which they need for the pricing.
And if I go from the meeting, I think Councilman Collins' concern was, is why is a canopy, could it be, like she said, if up against a building to do, so it's kind of semantics, but it makes sense, and I think this still allows the gas stations and stuff to be able to do this instead of going through variances with...
DK group that's coming through.
They've had several variances.
So other than a gas station, a freestanding canopy, I'm trying to think of an example. I'm kind of stumped, other than, I mean...
There used to be that, that gas station was converted to a coffee station on Thirty-fourth and Indiana.
You have the occasional motor bank as well.
It's now a gas station again.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, one of the ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't think you'll ever catch where you eliminate everything totally, but...
So does this solve the sign issue that's a school, a church in a residential area that I think Terry's group had come across? Does this solve all that, Terry?
Okay.
Yeah, because I know that's one that we came up, several churches and stuff.
That's item number nineteen.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really see any problems. I think a lot of it wasn't major changes. I think some of it was just clarifications in making it a little clearer to what the rules were, so.
I'm okay with it.
I like the clarification for freestanding canopy.
So we're calling the question on this one?
You can, you can do like a motion to consent to the suggested changes to, as outlined by Councilmember Collins?
That's your call, sorry.
No, that's, no, that's fine. I mean, I think it would be good if they want to have it on the record.
Yeah. I think they want your feedback on it.
Do we, let's say, I would like to call for a motion to approve or agree with Councilman Collins' recommendations. So moved. Do we have a second?
Your motion, me.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
He can make the motion, right?
Yes.
So we got it. This meeting is adjourned at six thirty-six.